Thank you all for coming out. Well, that's the back clock, but by the, um, the new clock or whatever, the established clock. The Conde, May 22nd, 2017, in order to zone the fields for Rappahannock County meeting to order. So as I open the meeting, I would like to have Mr. Dameron call the wall.
Mr. Bird.
President.
Mr. Conick.
Here.
Um, do you have any comments?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Matthews.
I'm here.
Mr. Anderson.
It's not, it's most likely not going to be here. I got a phone call, a voice message, and it was doubtful because of something that came up.
Mr. Sharp.
And Mr. Sharp is not.
Is that a B's?
Okay.
Cool, it is.
Okay. So, um... How could he miss this? How could he miss this? So, I'd like Mr. Dameron, who's the zoning administrator, to introduce himself.
I think I know everybody here, but my name is Dave Dameron. He was zoning officer.
And he's acting secretary for, slash clerk for the VCA for right now.
Let me get a train.
Working under...
He was standing on the track when it struck its front.
I'd like to make an announcement that the Dodd tourist home, SG-17-05-08, has been withdrawn, so that application was withdrawn this afternoon. And if there's anyone here who wanted to make any comments, we're not opening for comments or hearings, so you can exit the discussion. The second thing is that there are three members here. Anytime that the VCA is in session, there has to be a affirmative vote that at least three members is required for any decision and determination that we make. And so, we have the Windsor Lodge stables, the LLC tourist home, the number of special use 17-05-05 is here, the family's here, as well as their attorney. And so, they have the choice to, that we may hear it or if we want to make the continuance, we can do that tomorrow next month. We've got, we have given that opportunity before.
If you don't get three votes for that, you're not going to get it.
So, um, Mr. Brown, do you want to team four?
Yes, Dr. Matthews, we would like you to...
Okay. Then, then the, we've had our call to order, so we need to adopt, adopt the agenda, knowing with the realization that one withdrawn and we will hear the second Windsor Lodge stable.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we amend this agenda and add two items. The first item, we, I mean, I heard what you said before. I think that our secretary that we elected is the secretary until she either resigns or dies or is replaced. And to my knowledge, none of those three things has happened. So, I think one of our first orders of business is that we need to designate someone as the acting secretary formally, because only the board can do that, in my view. And I think we ought to add that because somebody's got to put the ads in the paper and have the authority to do all that sort of administrative stuff. And so, I would propose to add that and probably the resolution of it would take shorter than it just took me to propose, but the agenda. And the second thing that I would like to put on the agenda is this Freedom of Information Act Advisory Council opinion, which came out today, that involves this board based on an inquiry, and I would just like to take maybe five minutes and summarize what's in it. I mean, I don't think we're going to try to take any action on it tonight, but I would like to inform the board and the public what is in it and what happened. So, I'd like to put that under new business as the first thing, because also, it also involves those procedures that the board's been following, and I think it has some really good guidance in it, so that we don't make any further mistakes and have to inconvenience people by continuing hearings and postponing them and re-advertising and all that.
Okay.
So, I like to propose on, that's my motion.
Okay, so we'll take each at each one at a time. So, do you have anything to order for the agenda or any additions?
No, I do not.
Okay, so the first item is that we would add election of a secretary to the VCA. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. The second item is that we allow Mr. Conick to talk a little, five minutes in the timeline. And under new business, about a document that he received a month or hour or so ago. Okay? So, we can do that, or that can be continued to be followed. Do you have a motion? We have a motion, only a second to that. Okay. All in favor, say aye. I'm going to ask him. So, we can, we will put that on the agenda. So, I would propose that we go ahead and elect a secretary, so that we have official, we have someone who can take the minutes.
Very good. Well, my question to Mr. Dameron is the same question I asked the previous one. Do you want to do it? Do you have time to do it?
I will attempt to do it, yes.
Sorry, so our discussion is, he said he'd do it. There is, we are looking to see if we can hire a secretary for us, a new appointed secretary. And so, I would ask Mr. Dameron if he thought that if, until, for interim, would that, would that work for you until we get others, personnel in place?
I'm willing to do that if the board chooses, you know, I do think they do need a permanent option. I'm willing to do that.
So, we, so, then we could...
Was your...
No, no, that was, that was in the works before, and then with all the transitions that we've had recently, it's, we've got to start that again.
That's sort of my question, what happened to that? Because I thought we voted in April, add that money into the budget, and we had a big discussion about it, and honestly, I don't know if that, I think it was $2,000 or $1,500, whatever it was, did that actually get put in the budget? Do you know?
I do not know.
I do not know.
Okay, I don't know either.
So, we need to follow up for the, for the budget for that.
Aye.
So, all in favor of having Mr. Dameron be a secretary tonight and interim secretary until we sort through some of these...
Further or something or another. Your feelings won't be hurt if we get another person.
They will not.
So, all in favor, Mr. Dameron?
That's speculation, all those people. The last time my vote was in.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Mr. Secretary. Okay. So, then, in, we do not have minutes for adoption, they are being created right there, being written off right now. The, we, it's listed here as a public comment. In the VCA, our public comment period generally comes with each application, and so after the applicant presents the, um, application and their intent, then the board asks some questions, and then we open it for public comment. So, and we're going to continue that this evening.
Well, I have a comment on that, Madam Secretary, and that is, all the other boards in the, in the whole county do have a public comment period, the planning commission's got it, Mr. Bird knows, and I don't see why we don't have it. I mean, it's, I mean, probably there's not to be so much public comment, but sometimes it might be, and why can't we do that? Why don't we do it?
Then, as we, as we move forward and we solidify our procedures, we can look at that for the right now, but our public comment will be with the applications, we say. It's a separate agenda.
Well, yeah, I told you, I adopted the agenda, and it's on there, so why don't you just answer, does any public comment? But the answer is going to be no.
Yeah, I have public comment.
Oh, you do? Well, come on, let's have public comment. Will you second it?
I'm happy to have public comment.
Okay. Then we will open for a public comment before we take our applications. Again, if you have a public comment, you need to stand and state your main feeling, and, oh, everything I think we're recording here, and then it's also on video over here. So, this one is left to you. Can I give you my, yes, can I give you my comments, so you have a copy of it?
You are.
All right. My T-shirt. I have to say something.
Thank you.
I can get one anyway, I have them all.
My name is Lynn Sullivan, and I'm the county district. And this is called "A Case for Tourist Homes Events and Agro Business." Dear VCA members, the purpose of this letter is to endorse applicants for tourist and event permits in Rappahannock County. Now that there's a push for more distillery breweries, Rappahannock County needs to be more affordable short-term rentals for visitors. Quality tourist homes enable visitors to help relink or share with their friends by splitting the cost they can still afford to spend their dollars on agro business, recreation, food, and spirits. We only have a fraction of the tourist homes needed to accommodate for agro business, events, and the new push for more distilleries, breweries, and counties, yay, small business. As such, I would like to endorse Heidi and Desmond Godwin out here, and Susan Colly's tourist home applications at the July VCA hearing. Until last week, our statute regarding the issuance of permits for tourist homes was very clear. Five acre properties and agricultural locations are permitted to apply. These two applicants have upheld the standard of our law, and they have spent considerable time and money to give the county money. Now David Conick wants to change the ordinance back to 10 acres, which is a matter for the courts to decide. Mr. Godwin properly wrote an opinion, which will make it unlikely that the Dads will get a hearing at all, let alone a fair hearing. They live on five acres. The job of elected and appointed officials is to grant permits and explain to the public why an applicant meets the standards for the applicable law. That really is their only job, is to pay the rental and the best permits. If county officials are not abiding by the laws of the county and state, they are breaching their fiduciary responsibility and encouraging unnecessary expense through appeals, which they will rightly lose. By not following the rules of law themselves, elected and appointed officials are encouraging citizens to behave in the same way. In perspective of events over here, Bill Fletcher and Susan Colly have contributed much to the county, and they have a right to make a living on their land in a way that is in compliance with county statutes. Why should they pay for everyone else's open space? If they are illegally prevented from doing so, their land will be sold and cut up, and the 25 acre rule will be overturned in a blink. Heidi and Desmond Godwin are wonderful people, they have an ideal property for a tourist home, and they want to support the sale of agro business and events. So do Susan Colly and Bill Fletcher. Thirty years ago, Rappahannock County was a welcoming place and encouraged diversity through farming, events, art, music, and outdoor recreation. When the market crashed in 2008, so did our property values. In response to the big recession, other destination getaway communities increased their budgets for tourism. Rappahannock, Rappahannock defunded its office of tourism. Loudon and Falkir land values have recovered, Rappahannock land values have not. I would propose the following. We need to increase tourist homes to support current and future events, which in turn will generate significant revenue to promote agro business, maintain the beauty that we love, which is why we live here and why people want to come. Pay elected appointed officials a proper stipend for their time and expertise, and elect people who are qualified and agree to a term limit. As a result, neither people can hold our elected officials accountable for their representation of us. This is certainly not true today, as evidenced by David Conick's latest sneak attack on tourist home applications. Mr. Conick was appointed to uphold the law and be in part of it. Applications for tourism and B and B permits should be a simplified process whereby the applicant agrees to follow applicable county law, and those statutes are listed in all applications. Actively court tourism-oriented events streamline the process and work with applicants to ensure that that events will comply with county statutes and guidelines. And five, make decisions based on law, not politics or personal agendas.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, since my name was in both places in that little comment, I'd like to respond just a little...
The comment.
Well, I'm a...
But you're in one of this board way.
You're not going to let me respond?
No, I'm not going to respond right now.
Look at you.
It's not, it's not in order.
I, I think it is in order. Board supervises, everybody else that has public comment, you have a period to respond, especially if somebody attacked me. You're not going to let me respond? I move that I be allowed to respond. What do you say, Mr. Bird?
I move that we continue with our agenda.
So, the next item on the agenda is leave business in this Windsor Lodge Stables LLC tourist home, SG-17-05-05. And so, the applicant is here, as is Mr. Brown. Would you like to come forward? And we have to, you need to have your, or we want to stand?
I'll be having to stand, Dr. Matthews, if that's simple.
Okay, and normally, we swear in the applicant, but we won't swear in.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
But you say it's going to be true, the whole truth, not the truth.
My name is Michael Brown. I'm a attorney with the law firm, Walker Jones, with offices in Warrenton in Washington, Virginia. I believe we all, everybody here is familiar with me. I represent the applicants, Allnell Farm. I am Windsor Lodge Stables in connection with the tourist home application before you this evening. Ms. Cooney and her daughter Stephanie Warham are principals in the LLCs who are here this evening as well to answer any questions that may arise. As described in the application materials, the tourist home use is involved in a one-and-a-half block storage home located on the Allnell Farm property, which consists of approximately 432 acres, thereby eliminating any concern regarding the minimum acre requirement. It's been the topic of discussion recently. The application describes the proposed use as one, the house has one large bedroom, two bathrooms, and a sitting room, and a sleeper sofa. It will accommodate a maximum of four people comfortably, and that's the limit of the application that's before you this evening, for individuals. I would just like to address briefly the additional standards for review under section 66K of section 170 of the Rappahannock County Code. Given the proposed number of guests, four, that's well within the 12 limit standard, limits set forth in that standard. Off-street parking immediately in the vicinity of the log cabin is located well outside the front yard department. In the application materials and a full-size copy of the drawings that Mr. Clark has prepared are available over there for review, you can see that the property is located, by my calculation, roughly a third of a mile off of Jericho Road, have a private driveway. The parking is immediately adjacent to that log cabin, so it's well outside any kind of front yard or side yard requirements. The proposed use is located in an existing home, and it's a log cabin, it appears to be a residential structure, thereby satisfies additional standard number three. We've already addressed the acreage and requirement, additional standard four. Of course, breakfast meals will only be served to paying guests, there's no provision to sell meals to other individuals or the public in general, that's satisfied standard number five. And the driveway, Windsor Lodge Lane, which serves this, this house, is located within a 50-foot wide right away that crosses the Windsor Lodge Stables property, and therefore is satisfies additional standard number six. As I indicated, Ms. Cooney and Ms. Warham are here this evening to answer any questions. We had, I think, approximately half a dozen members of the public rise to speak at the planning commission meeting. All of those neighbors and all of them spoke in favor of this application, so we hope that we be with your approval this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I do not. I've got a couple of questions. One is, Mr. Brown, did I hear you say that it's going to be limited to four people at a time?
That's correct, Mr. Brown.
And the right of way, isn't that property all owned by the same people, or no?
No, sir. The, the, the right of way crosses the Windsor Lodge Stables property, that's the front portion of you, if you refer to Mr. Clark's schematic, it indicates that. And then crosses over onto the Allnell Farm property. Windsor Lodge Stables is a co-applicant in this, in this application.
So, basically, the road is all on the property of the applicant, one or the other?
Well, one or the other, yes, sir. I, I, thank you for correcting me, not, not the Allnell Farm property. I just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
So, here is five LLCs. It's up there.
So, I guess technically it could be sold to some other owner at some point in time.
Yes, sir.
And what kind of a road is that? What's built on the right of way in the...
It's what I would describe as a, as a typical driveway property. I don't, I believe that there's a, there is at least one photograph of the roadway in your material.
Is it hard rimmed, or is it...
It's pavement, and then goes to ground.
Where does it go to ground? On the, on the same track?
On our state.
What I mean, on the track where the log cabin is, that's where it turns into ground?
No.
And how long is that altogether? From the road all the way into the log cabin?
It's about a third of a mile.
I have a question. What kind of signage will you use? Will there be any signs?
No.
So, people who are coming know where it is?
Yes.
Even though it may not be on GPS.
Where are we going to put, end it on the invitations?
No, we're not invitations. This is, well, actually, I'm going to do like social media, I'll put directions on how to get there.
Okay, so...
It'll, it'll be advertised with direction C.
All right, and then, is there any, I don't know that there will be any issues with lighting, but is there any, you know, usually in the county, you like to have downlights and that kind of thing, so we consider the, the...
Dark skies.
Dark skies.
Right.
So, it's going to be...
Yes.
Mr. Bird, can you give us a summary of what occurred at the...
Yes. To repeat, Mr. Brown, there were numerous neighbors, the ones that I, was, all of the neighbors at the meeting were in favor of the application, and so that it didn't seem that there was any particular problem that way, and the discussion was basically nonexistent because of that, and it was approved.
Recommended.
Man, this is...
Okay, so it was recommended, okay. All right, thank you. I'm going to open for this application, the public hearing now. Is there anyone who would like to speak either for or has concerns about the application that's been presented by Ms. Cooney and Mr. Brown?
I'm in, I'm in favor of the application.
You have to state your name and the district.
Lynn Sullivan, Hampton District, and I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you.
Anyone else have comments, concerns? Okay. We'll close the public hearing for the application, so we can have discussion on this.
I don't know, I think, I mean, I think, I guess one question I didn't mention, do it now, is, do you have a problem if we limit this to the current ownership?
I, I don't have a problem with that, Mr. Conick, except that I don't believe that that's consistent with the legal standards applied, special use permits. Typically, I think they, they do run with the land, but in this case...
Well, we've done it in some, in some cases, we've done it, in others we haven't, so I'm just asking, do they, I mean, my concern is this, I'll tell you flat out, it's the fact that the other track through which the right of way passes could conceivably be conveyed to somebody else, and then you might not have, well, who knows, the family members might get in a fight, that, that never happens. But anyways, you know, some, some, the circumstances could change, they'll make objectives, so that's my, that's what I'm thinking about.
Obviously, whatever pleases the board and, you know, and you...
Well, I mean, if you're not going to object to it, then maybe we could just go do that. And do you have a problem if we ask that it be, I mean, my sense of it is, as long as it's in the current ownership, it shouldn't have to come back to review, but, I mean, that's another way we could do it, is that if the ownership of either track changes, or at least ways the track through which the right of way goes, so the one that crosses the road, we can...
But it's, it's a legally established right of way.
Yes.
Well, it is, that's right. But I mean, they might have neighbors at some point that object to it, and I would just say, maybe they don't have a right to, you know, be hurt, or have it reviewed and say...
There is no neighbors.
Well, no, I mean, if you, but if you sell one of those tracks, I'm saying, one day LLC's changed its name.
Well, it's in my estate, you know, the five LLCs, so it's the way the land is.
Right, so, so you're going to live forever?
I don't want to go back.
No, but my sister and I are on it.
It goes to my two daughters and grandchildren.
What if they get in a fight, and one of them's...
Speculating, I'm going back to lawn.
All right, that's all the questions that I had. I make a motion to approve it, subject to, subject to review if, and subject to us making the findings, but I, but I could make a motion, I mean, that all the findings are satisfied, and that we approve this subject to a review in some period and all leave up to the board members, if, if there's a change of ownership.
Comments, Mr. Bird?
It would seem to me, in this situation, that the change of ownership business is not really necessary, because any new owner would have to buy, knowing that the special use is in existence.
Well, they might not, according to you, but it's completely unnoticed.
I mean, we could worry about media strikes, too, but...
All right, I'll amend my motion and just move that we approve it without any...
Is there a second to approving it? All right, we have the, for the, to move it further, we have Mr. Brown went through the section 170, 66K, the six items that are for the standards for tourist, bed and residences and boarding homes, that's going to be tourist home. Do we need to read read those, or can we read that?
I make a motion that we make all those findings, as well as the one in section 170-52A through 11, or whatever they are. The general standards.
The 52, that's the general standard.
I just don't think there's any issues about it.
Yeah, the general standard's all about that there's adequate parking, impact, and the size of the buildings and so forth, so...
Some like issue on 400 and what?
Four, four, four acres, okay. So, then I will...
The adequate parking for...
And a second to that, that motion?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And a, so, we have three members, so we have a, a four, and a man, so...
Thank you.
You'll need to, the board's got, and see, really, I'm, it's only administrator of the county.
All right, you have 25 minutes now.
I am going to wait till the 110.
So, you're not.
What year will that be? Because then we'll maybe come back and...
Okay.
Brown needs to go.
All right, thank, thank you all.
Thank you all.
We had, under new business, we added an item, and that item was brought forward by Mr. Conick about a document that he has received recently, and so he has a few minutes.
Thank you. Madam Chairman and member of the board, and ladies and gentlemen, we've had some issues in the sort of zoning appeals. I think we've had six meetings, maybe seven, in the last year that had to be canceled or postponed because of improper notices. And in addition to those six or so meetings, we had three meetings this year, in which I wrote a letter to the board and, or advised the board at the meeting that I didn't think we had complied with the Freedom of Information Act requirements, because the notices that are required to be sent out to various people pursuant to section 2.2, 3707E, that's the people who've requested the zoning office to send them notices of our meetings, didn't get them in a timely way. The notices were sent on Sunday, in one case it weren't sent till Tuesday of a Wednesday meeting. And so, I pointed that out, and pointed out that there's an Attorney General's opinion that says, if you violate FOIA, that any actions that you take at that meeting are void ad initio, and not, so the permits that were issued would thus be invalid. And all three times, the board voted, go ahead and have the meeting anyway. And so, we've issued, to my knowledge, at least four permits, which are Taylor, and Callaway, and Andrews, and last time was, was Estes. We issued those permits at meetings for which, in this letter opinion that came out today, advisory opinion that came out, the notice was deficient, and therefore, the permits are deficient. So, I want to bring that to the attention of the board, and I think that what we ought to do, and maybe we'll do it tonight, I don't know, whatever the position of the board is, but I think we have a direct zoning administrator, our new secretary, to re-advertise those... our new secretary, to re-advertise those and send out the notices. The notices for the planning commission were okay, so now we would have to come back here. To my recollection, all four of those things, not anybody from the public showed up and, you know, had, had any comment, pro or con in any of them. And so I think it would be sort of perfunctory, but I think we owe it to those people because right now, uh, they could have neighbor theoretically move in in five or 10 years. And since at least one member of the public is so concerned about sneak attacks of people who actually want to, see the law applied. What could happen is somebody could move in next door to one of those people and say, I objected to that use being done there. And if it was void ad initio, their permit is invalid and it could still be brought up. So I think we ought to re-advertise and redo those permits in accordance with this. But you want to do it tonight? Do it tonight? If you don't?
Comments, Mr. Berg?
But I would suggest we sit, we wait until we have a meeting of the full board.
Okay.
And deal with it then.
Okay. I agree with that and I believe that we need to have our county officials go back, look at, at the, the, these meetings that are in question. And perhaps even at the meeting that we work, where we would come forward with this, is perhaps have the county attorney with, and, or his opinion before to validate this. And I know that there's, I saw that, just glanced through that from the Virginia FOIA, but we want to make sure that all the information, all the facts are correct and there and then we can analyze it and then make a decision as a full board.
Okay, I move to do that.
Okay, then we will do that and then, um, perhaps we can do that in August. Do we have anything that you know is coming up on the agenda in August? Will the conference center come up in August?
No. There are several applications and I'm still receiving those.
What conference?
The Clutch.
Well, no, not the Clutch.
That's, I think that that's the board's supervisor.
That, that's board supervisors, even though some of that information is in our package, it just all, uh, shifts together. So that would not become the force, that's correct. So, uh, I believe that I will, we will look to see how busy our schedule is for the, for the 23rd and if we put it on there as well as some other items. Or I don't know that maybe we would need to have an additional meeting after the 23rd or another, in between the meeting in order to be able to look at all of these things that we will have in the very short future. So within the next month, it looks likely, or could be as long as two months, and we'll be able to, to discuss this.
All right, so we'll just put it on the agenda for next year? And you'll let Mr. Goff know? I mean, I sent Mr. Goff the opinion, so he's aware of it. But if you're going to, if the board's going to ask him, unless it would be a part of the motion, to ask Mr. Goff whether he wants to.
And, or who wants to?
Agree or disagree, then he can fight.
So we, so we do that now?
Do that tonight, let it carry.
It would seem, it would seem nice to have everything set for the meeting. We would need to do that anyway.
Right. I mean, I just feel like the people who, they didn't know anything about it, or they didn't know anything about it, it's not their fault. And they came to the thing and got their permit and if there's some defect in it, I think it's up to us to cure it and do it as quickly as possible because some of them, I'm not sure of all the circumstances, but people, they might be spending money thinking they've got a valid permit, only to find out they don't. And so.
Yeah, I think this is.
I think we're doing it correctly.
So, so what we have decided is to ask, get the legal opinions and the.
From Goff and, and the, the facts and the county officials.
And we will hear it, put it on the agenda for the August 3.
All right. Any other, so there's nothing, nothing else on our agenda?
I'm moving to, um.
I'm moving to, okay, that, uh.
What was your second?